Meeting Tuesday, March 22. We just left an executive session and we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we start every meeting, I'll read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during the public comment? We didn't have anybody notify us, so I just want to check. WCAT folks, let us know if we've got anybody. Nope, okay. All right, then we will move on to the Student Advisory Council. Do we have any students with us tonight? Maybe not. Maybe they're enjoying the, it's not really nice out, but maybe they're tired from their tryouts. Nobody? Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for checking. Okay, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Markham.
I move the school committee approve the minutes of March 8, 2022, school committee meeting, and the, uh, school committee and public hearing meeting, and accept the minutes of February 28, 2022, School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee, the minutes of the March 11, 2022, School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of the March 16, 2022, School Committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
A motion made in seconded discussion. So I have one item. In the March 8, School Committee meeting minutes, I had wanted to make an amendment that would include a sentence that says regarding our budget. So if you guys look in the budget forum section, we did not call out the email, Doug, that you received from Kelly St. Hilaire, I think.
I think I did.
You called it out.
Correct.
But we did not call it out in the meeting minutes.
Got it, got it.
Oh, it's not in the minutes, you mean?
Right, so I wanted to suggest that we open, we include a statement in the minutes that says, "The committee received an email from Kelly St. Hilaire, mom of a first grader at Woodville and a pre-K student at Doyle. She urged that budget is allocated to implicit bias training for teachers, nurses, and staff regarding issues around race, gender, and neurodivergence." And just leave it at that. I just wanted to recognize that that email had come through, that it had been brought up quickly during that session. So I want to just amend the minutes to include kind of that sentence. And now how would we do this?
So we would make a motion to amend the minutes of March 8 to include what the chair just, just read.
So I need a second on that.
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, and then we have to-
Now we go back to the main motion.
Write main motion of approving all of the, the full consent agenda.
Now with March 8 minutes being amended.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, so we've got a six to zero because Mr. Boudreaux is not here. Okay. Budget items, Christine, we don't have any tonight.
No gifts.
So that leads to my comments. I have two things tonight. One, we received an email regarding the Wakefield Independent- Independence Day Committee. So WIDC sends, sends a request for approval for their carnival, which is one of their big fundraisers for the parade, which happens in the parking lot of the Galvin. That has been approved by the town council and they are looking for our approval. I got that email today, which is why it's not on the agenda. But we, we thought we could go ahead and kind of put that through and have, make a motion and vote for that. So I'm going to have you make the motion and then we can have any discussion that we need to have.
I move the Wakefield School Committee approve the request of the Wakefield Independence Day Committee to hold its, its annual carnival during April School Vacation Week in the Galvin Middle School parking lot.
Second.
Motion made in seconded discussion. So I know I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Amy.
What are the actual dates, like is it Saturday to Sunday?
It's, um, it's usually Sunday to Saturday is typical.
Is Brian on?
Yes.
Okay, so Brian Fox offered to come and I, because I thought we might have some questions. Can we, can we bring him up on screen?
Monday is the holiday.
Okay. Brian, if you can hear us, can you answer that question about dates?
Holidays. Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. So they're going to set up on Sunday, the carnival usually starts on the Tuesday and runs through the Saturday of April Vacation Week.
Okay.
So the 17th to the 23rd.
But we would need to designate the space for the entire time for setup and breakdown on either end.
So the 17th is that.
And what is this space? Is it the parking lot? It's just the parking lot, it's not the fields?
Just the parking lot.
Just the parking lot.
So I believe that the town will still be coordinating and doing some work with the police and fire. And there's additional departments that are going to be reaching out to Brian as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Even though we haven't had a carnival in a couple of years, we're really COVID-driven, but it's, it's not, it's very typical, very appropriate. This has been an annual carnival that has existed from really the, the early 90s when the Wakefield Independent State Committee formed. This has been a fundraiser for many, many years.
Great, since Tim is here, do we have any concerns from a facility standpoint? Or do we, do you not really care about the parking lot much?
I care very deeply about the parking lot.
Okay, so Tim just said he cares deeply about the parking lots, but has no concerns. Doug, do you have any concerns?
No, I just know that the town is going to be, do, need to do some additional work and they're going to reach out to Brian. So that's, other than that, I think we're-
We're good.
From our perspective, I think that the town is going to take care of the safety, setup, and oversight, so.
Yes, all the details have been submitted, all the town departments checked off. The last one that was waiting was school department, and that's tonight.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously, six to zero. Brian, thanks for joining.
Thank you, Brian.
Good luck.
Thank you all, I hope to see you out there.
Yep.
And then my other comment was just an opportunity, I think the, the, most of the, I think everybody on the committee knows, but the public may not know, that Superintendent Lyons successfully defended his dissertation. That's the right way to say it, right? And is now, can now be called Dr. Lyons. Woohoo! So Doug and I talked a little bit about this and he shared with me that it was supposed to be a five-year plan that, but with COVID ended up being a little bit longer. But it's been, it's been a journey that you've been on. I don't know if you want to talk about it for a couple of minutes?
Uh, no.
I'm just happy it's done.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm pleased to, I've defended and I'll be officially graduating in May. And I'm, I'm pleased to have had the experience. And I'm grateful to my dissertation chair, who was really instrumental in helping me with my research and completing my dissertation. And so pleased to, pleased to be done with that milestone. And so just working on just a few things to just wrap up and finish the year at, at the university and, and looking forward to just moving on. The, the big challenge now is, is kind of figuring out how to use the research to, to really help improve the work that we're doing here in the Wakefield Public Schools.
Yeah. Do we call you doctor like right away or do we have to wait until you graduate? Oh, Kevin's saying, "Do it now."
Yes, it's now.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right, so Dr. Lyons from here on out.
Okay.
Any questions for Doug?
Dr. Lyons.
Yeah, Dr. Lyons. Dr. Lyons, can you briefly, because we always love to talk about our dissertations, can you talk about what your research was? Yes, my research topic was, it was about academic achievement, belonging, and identity. The research study that I did looked at high school graduates that participated in kind of different levels. We, I kind of interviewed, did semi-structured interviews of, of six graduates and, and talked to them about their academic experience, what teachers did to help them be successful. And so really looked at a number of instructional, different instructional practices, and different ways that teachers supported students to have a greater sense of belonging, not only for individual students, but in their classes as a whole, and how that impacted their achievement over time, and not only in those individual classes, but as they moved on in the late, in their later years. Many of the students, almost all of the students that I, that I interviewed, talked about one significant teacher that made a difference for them in, in so many different ways. I think it was really heart-filling to do, to do the work and to hear the stories of the graduates and just hear them talk about success that they had in their junior year or, and senior year and, and kind of give all the credit to a history teacher that they had in their sophomore year. And just the difference that they made. You know, students spoke about, you know, being a black student in, in school and, and what that was like and in terms of how, how to fit in, make friends, what that meant socially. But it was really just, I, I learned a lot in the process. And I, I think what, the, one of the greatest takeaways for me was just the significant difference that adults make every day for students. But to hear their individual stories and to take the interview data and to kind of triangulate that and to have that tell a story, you know, several themes emerged in the research. And so I, I can talk more about that at another time, but that's a very quick summary. Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, Dr. Lyons, I'll pass it over to you for your remarks.
Still getting used to this Dr. Lyons stuff. Thank you. I'd like to start off, we don't, we don't have our students here this evening. I think that there was a mix-up at us getting the link over to them. I'm just going to include some, some quick student information. So if our students were here tonight, they would report that today is day two of the high school MCAS schedule. They're a little out of testing shape and, and-
Today was day one.
Today, I'm sorry, today was day one. Day two of getting ready for us in the schedule. And so day one for them testing. But I think students are adjusting to the demands of, of, of testing and getting back into the swing of things here. I think we need to thank Geraldine Traficante for setting up schedules and making that all go. Our IT department, here at the high school, we had BYOD, so we have students testing on individual devices. That's always tricky when students are bringing in devices from home and using those to test or if students don't have a device. So thank you to our IT department, Jeff Weiner and his team. But that's what's happening at the high school. I also want to recognize Brad Diaz, who was named all-scholastic by the Boston Herald for the, for swim team, and to, to Abby Boudreaux, who was named Boston Bruin, from the, from the Boston Bruins, they named kind of the sportsmanship award of the year. And so if I have that correct, and so.
So I think Bradley was track, maybe, right?
You know, what's interesting is that the-
Is there another Brad?
So, you know, I thought that as well, but I just, I just looked at my email and it said, yeah, and so-
Wow, all right.
So I believe he, correct me if I'm off, but didn't, yes.
I have the email right here, do you want me to pull the email or?
No, no, I, I, I'll, I'll pull it back up and, and make sure I have it correct. But congratulations to Brad for being named all-scholastic. Other news that's happening at the high school and at the, at the middle school. Kara, correct me if I'm off, we're just closing out the second trimester.
Second trimester, yeah, grades just closed.
And so grades will be coming out there shortly, that's a quick update there. In regard to COVID, numbers are down this week. So we have five positive cases in the district, four students, one adult, and we have two students in quarantine, which is a low for us. So very, very pleased about that. And so those are my quick comments. I have other items in the queue. And, and so I'd like to, with your permission, take those out of order and ask-
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
When, when the quarantine numbers are so low, what do those staff members do when they're not? Do they cover classes?
They do, they cover classes, they jump in and help, students need individual help. So we, we don't have enough hands in the schools right now to, to do all that we're doing. In fact, several of our principals have started to really think about those positions and how instrumental they have been. I think that the adults in those spaces are going to be sorely missed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Doug, I have a quick question too.
Of course.
With the, the middle school grades closing, I know in the past there was an issue with iPass, getting the students' grades to find out honor roll students that used to go into the paper. Is there a way we can maybe look into that and see if that's something that can be fixed?
Gee, could you ask the question again, please?
Sure, so in the years past, they would publish the kids that made honor roll, seventh and eighth graders that made honor roll.
Yeah.
I had reached out this year and was told, because of the, I, there was an issue with iPass, that they weren't able to pull those students out to send over. So I'm just wondering if we can look into that so we can acknowledge those students that have earned those grades.
I'll be happy to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep, you're certainly welcome. So just a correction, for, for Brad, it was track, I'm looking back.
Okay.
So the, the Boston Herald does in fact say swimming, but it is in fact track. So I think that there's a little mix-up on the part of the Herald.
And I'm not sure if he goes by Brad or Bradley, because I've never heard anybody refer to him other than Bradley Diaz, but.
Bradley it is. Bradley, I, forgive me for, uh-
He's very fast.
I'm just trying to talk you up here. And I think we also have Sam Seabreed, right?
Yes, Sammy was there too.
Right, so she ran in New York City in the regional games as well. More to follow on that, we'll report on her in our next meeting.
So we're going to take Tim out of order.
Correct.
Good evening. Just want to give you all a quick update on the results of our capital planning. We last week met with the Capitol Committee and reviewed our requests and, and found out what we will be moving forward with. And just before I get going, I do want to say thank you to our partners in DPW, the Capitol Committee, as well as FinCom, who, who did come on and, and provide some guidance and some help moving forward with these capital decisions. So I'm going to review through the tiers and I believe we do have the document up. In tier one, the Capitol Committee approved badge readers, two badge readers for the Doll Bear School. They approved, so we had asked for $100,000 for the addition of some air conditioning at the Greenwood School. They had some questions in, about that. And so instead of approving that full $100,000, what they asked us to do was complete an engineering study in conjunction with DPW to find the feasibility of, of doing that and at what level can, can we accomplish that goal. So I will, I'm going to team up with the DPW, Joe Conway, and we're going to get that moving right away. So that's something that we'll be looking into and, and we will be requesting the funding, you know, based on our findings for next year's capital. At the Wakefield High School, we requested and were approved for a Ventrac SSV. It's a sidewalk snow vehicle, one that we just last year procured at the Galvin and has worked out wonderfully for us. So we'll be looking forward to, to adding that to our fleet here at, at Wakefield High School. Moving down to tier two, at Walton, they approved $160,000 for a new playground, which we are certainly in need of there. And so we'll be working again with DPW, Dennis Fazio, on getting that in the works as soon as possible. So naturally, you know, this summer, we're looking at Woodville School and getting that project completed as soon as we can. And then immediately following, we want to be looking at how soon we can get the Walton project done. Moving down to Woodville, they approved us to, to refinish the gym floor. Certainly a project that, that needs to, to be completed, so I'm, I'm actually excited about that. It's going to be, it'll be a nice upgrade for us at, at Woodville. And then at the high school, the scoreboard and cage was funded by donation. So that was a donation that was given to the town and approved by the town council. It funded, that donation funded the replacement of Walsh Field's scoreboard last year. And there was a remainder of funds that the Capitol Committee voted to appropriate for, for us here. So that is a, definitely a worthwhile project for us. So that was what we had requested and had approved through the Capitol Committee. There are also a number of projects that the DPW had requested and were also approved. So I, it's not on my list, but I'm going to run through a few of those. They had approved $12,000 for ceiling tile replacements at the Wakefield High School, something that, you know, we will make good use of. They approved $6,000 for a new water heater at Woodville. They approved $20,000 for new gutters on the alley side of the Greenwood School. And they funded $6,000 for a new roof ladder at Walton that will give us much easier access to our air handlers and, and things of that nature on the roof over there. That's been a challenge in recent time. At Galvin, they funded $12,000 for, for new door handles, something we've, has been sort of a constant issue. We've been revisiting that frequently. So it'll be, it'll be refreshing to get some new hardware on those doors and, and make sure that they're functioning properly and won't need the constant attention.
Tim, is that the outdoor, the outside doors that, where that we've seen some issues or is that inside?
Correct, that's on the entrance, on the entrance ways. So as the building was built, the hardware is on the inside of the doors, which makes them just much more difficult to work on, a little bit more costly. You have to take the door apart to access the, the working parts to, to get anything done to them. So the idea is to get those pieces on the outside easily accessible, where we would have to call in a contractor to do the work. Now we can, it'll be something we could do very easily in the future.
Tim, are those just crash bars with rods?
Essentially, yeah. They approved $8,000 for three new doors on the team room at Landrigan. And that's it. So we were approved for a total between ourselves and DPW of $324,000 this year. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them if I can.
The, the Greenwood AC splits. So we requested $100,000 to install splits.
Correct.
But they, they approved $25,000 to study if we need splits? I guess I'm trying to understand what the study's for.
Sure, so they had concerns about whether or not the, the building being an old building.
Yeah.
They had concerns about whether or not the electrical service could handle an HVAC system of that nature. So basically, what we, what we want to do is bring in an engineering firm, make sure that, you know, A, that the building can handle it, B, you know, what would be the best way to approach that. And so, you know, times being what they are and the costs of these things, you know, it was, it was discussed for a length of time on, you know, they wondered, would $10,000 be enough? Would, you know, 15, and they landed on $25,000 being, you know, the appropriate amount of funding for, for a study of that nature. And so, like I said, we'll, we'll do, we'll complete that, find out, you know, that yes, we can do that project, the best way to, to approach it. And then we'll request again next year with capital to, to get that done and hopefully be able to complete that project as soon as possible.
So do you have a timeline, like the study will be done? I'm just thinking, like, if we didn't do the study, you could have got the units sooner. Like, is it going to be two years before we get air conditioning units probably?
Hopefully not. I'm hoping that, I've, I've spoken to Joe Conway about the process of the study. You know, naturally, both of us are eager to get it done as soon as possible. It's going to be a busy summer, but we're going to work to get that done as soon as we possibly can and hope to, to re-request for next, next fiscal year and, and get that project done hopefully next summer.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
The, the one, sort of the HVAC recommissioning for the district, is that, I'm assuming YOY is year-over-year?
Yeah.
Like a recurring cost, was that just captured somewhere else?
Correct, so I, it's sort of the thought process of, of FinCom and of the Capitol Committee that that's something that, in their opinion, should be done in the local budget. So, you know, we're going to look at that and, and it's certainly something that we're constantly working on our HVAC systems. And so, you know, with Christine's help and, and, you know, of looking at how that, how that shakes out, we'll, we'll be able to, you know, hopefully get that done.
So we're going to try and capture it as an operating expense instead of capital?
That's the plan.
So we've already invested heavily in our HVAC systems between us and the town. And in our SR3 money, we've also set aside some money for balancing to maintain the improvements we've made. But since I've been here, my three years of going to capital, we've, we've discussed this with the Capitol Committee and it's been sort of a back and forth about who should actually own this, who should own the maintaining of the HVAC. So it's been, in my experience, consistently denied by the Capitol Committee, but we still are working on that conversation.
So Stephen, that came up, we talked about it at the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee. I mean, the fact that FinCom has kind of weighed in that they too believe that it belongs in our budget probably makes it a little bit harder to argue. But Tom's analogy was an interesting one, which was if, are the HVAC systems at the police station or the library or any of the other town buildings, do, do those live in the local budget or do they live, does the DPW or does Capitol cover it? And so there's some, more discussion to be had on this one. But like Christine said, I think it's, this has been an ongoing debate that I think we continue to bring up because we don't think it belongs in our local budget and that we continue to get pushed back that it does. And I think Doug was going to try to have a conversation with some folks at Town Hall to, to see if we could get some, some agreement and just, yeah, some agreement on where it belongs.
Okay, thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
If I could just add to that, that, you know, this has been an ongoing conversation for many years. This is not a, this is not a new problem or a new question. And I think, you know, I think we collectively with the town as partners have really kicked the can down the road. And there have been years where the, where it has been funded by, 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 by capital. And I think, I think the Capitol Committee makes an excellent point, that it's really not a capital expense when it's a maintenance expense, you know, year after year. But then where does, where necessarily does that live? Whose responsibility is it for mechanical systems? Do those things fall under the purview of the custodial staff and the maintenance staff under Tim? Are they more consistent with the, the building requirements for all town buildings? So I think it's, we have to have that conversation. I think it's, it's a good one for us to- I think it's, it's a good one for us to have. And I think we'll, we'll have to land somewhere eventually. But, you know, I think this, the fact that they're denying it this year is almost forcing the hands of both the school department and the DPW to actually resolve it.
Somebody's gonna capture it, yeah.
Somebody's gonna capture it, exactly.
I think what's changed in the conversation this year is just the investments that we've made for the last few years to get our HVAC systems up to, up to a certain level due to COVID. Right, so we're paying attention to HVAC, talking about HVAC, talking about preventative maintenance differently than we were just a few years ago. And it's, it's a critical piece for us, right? And so, so we're gonna get there. It's, for us, it's the plan is if not A, then what's B? So we're, you know, and I'm confident that Tim can, can work with DPW and we'll get there, we'll get there. So more to follow on that.
Yeah, I can just follow. I, I'm very confident that we'll land there. And one of the things that we should continue to be appreciative for, of the town for is the attention that they've supported and allowed us to, to bring to these, to these things. I mean, even just, even just in recent times, the ability to have a full-time HVAC technician on staff versus having to sort of farm out the work to bring in vendors, which is certainly costing both the district and the town lots more money than having a salve technician. So lots of good things are happening. We just haven't figured this out yet.
So can I, if no one has any other questions, I just want to make sure that we are reporting all of the projects that we have. Tim, correct me if I'm off. We have, we're doing some additional work at Doyle?
We are.
And, and are we, we're also looking at additional work at Walton through a separate grant for a climbing wall, is that correct?
Yes, so start with Doyle. We've teamed up with Danielle Collins and Nutrition and will be adding a kitchen to the Doyle School this summer. That's something that is in full swing right now. We're, you know, talking with contractors and, you know, finding the layout of exactly where all the components of this kitchen will go and, you know, what exactly needs to be done. I've been working closely with Chris Pierce and Mackenzie O'Keefe in the Buildings Department of the DPW on exactly how that project will look. And then concurrently with that project, we're looking at sort of reorganizing the staff bathroom there. It currently is a large room with one stall. And we got a lot of feedback during budget conversations with the staff there that that's a need for them. They, they need more space in that bathroom. They need more accessibility to bathroom space there at Doyle. So we're gonna look at doing that this summer as well. You know, these are two, you know, significant projects. Lucky for us, plumbing work needs to be done for the kitchen. So that's, you know, we'll be able to kind of connect the two projects in ways to be able to get that, those both done this summer. And, you know, we're looking forward to kind of digging our heels in and working hard to get that done prior to September. It's gonna be a busy summer. And at the, at the Walton, yes, I've been speaking and working with Brian. He's excited about adding a climbing wall to their gym, something that, that has been a big area of interest in other buildings. And so that's something that we'll be adding this, this summer as well.
Great, so we've also done a kitchen at Walton too, correct?
We just, yes, we just finished, not a full remodel, but a kitchen upgrade at Walton that, you know, required a significant amount of plumbing work and it is a much better functioning kitchen at this point. And I think, you know, Danielle is certainly excited about, about getting that, getting that rolling. And it's, it's, it looks great and it functions just as good. So we're happy about that.
Great.
All right. When you say kitchen, so now the Doyle?
The servery.
So it's more of a service station?
I'm sorry, I, I thought you were talking about Walton.
Well, we can talk about both. But the Doyle doesn't have, they just get their food delivered in that, in the, in the bus? And there's a food service person there that distributes it?
There isn't.
So does this mean a new head count for Doyle when you get the kitchen?
For next year.
Is that in the budget?
They're gonna reconstitute their staffing.
Oh, okay.
And the food service account is a revolving account, so it's self-sustaining. So Danielle Collins from her account is able to fund this new kitchen.
Oh, cool, where's it going, like where the gym?
So when you walk in the front door of the Doyle, it's the staff room on your left. It's quite a large room.
So it's, it's gonna be a staff lunchroom. It's not gonna be a student lunch, not a servery like, like there is at the other schools.
Oh.
So this, so the, the build at Doyle is for, to do, to really do a renovation of the kitchen space for staff.
Okay.
The, we're still gonna have individual meals delivered on a cart like we're doing right now for students.
Okay.
Students won't go into the kitchen.
They're not, and they're not gonna come by and pick up meals like, all right?
We will, yeah, so, so.
So it's not, okay, so it's more of a staff kitchen?
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and on Walton, the, the new build was just really a whole new servery. Like new equipment was put in there, new plumbing.
New sink.
You know, new sinks, different heights, you know, of heating and refrigeration tables. Correct me if I'm off, Tim.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so, so the serving table is a little, you know, a little lower, more accessible for the kids. Is it's kind of a new setup to where they, you know, pick up their milk and where they would enter the line to, to pick up their, their food. And it's, it seems to be functioning really well so far. A lot of good feedback.
And those are both grants, you said?
Revolving accounts from the food services.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you so much, Tim. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Take care.
Safe travels.
Thanks.
Next up on, excuse me, on my agenda is we're welcoming this evening, so our architects from SMMA and our, from our project management group from Leftfield, they are going to report, they're gonna introduce themselves. And then they are going to report on the progress that we're making at the high school in regard to kind of design concepts. So with us this evening, we have Helen, Brian, and Lynn. Lynn, do you wanna start or?
Yes, I will. Thank you all for having us tonight. And as Doug said, we really want to keep you up to date with what's going on with the high school project. So to give you a little bit of insight into what's been going on over the, since the last time we met with you, SMMA has put together a presentation to talk to you about some of the discussions in terms of sustainability and where we are with the design alternatives and site options. I'll turn it over to Helen and she can start for SMMA.
Lynn, good evening, everyone. It's nice to be with you once again. This evening, actually, we really have two main areas of focus. We wanted to talk about sustainability, where, where things are headed. And then Brian will take us through how the design alternatives are shaping up. And then finally, Lynn will close us out with a look at the schedule. So if you go to the next, great, thank you. I think you have to keep clicking WCAT. Thank you. So, but slower, yes, thanks. So in order to understand sustainability for this project, there's, there's things we have to do and then there's things we want to do, right? And in order to do, to get to the result that we all want, we just wanted to talk through a little bit about some of these things that will have a deep effect on the project. And first and foremost is the fact that this project is, is funded in part by the Mass School Building Authority and they have their own green building requirements. They mandate that projects participate and achieve a certification under a green building rating system. In this case, we'll be using the U.S. Green Buildings Council's LEED system. They require that we go beyond energy and water performance, beyond mass codes. And they also require enhanced commissioning, which I'll, I'll touch a little bit more on these in the next slide. You can click ahead, please. Then there's codes, there's just, there's codes. There's building codes that we have to meet. And MSBA is, is in the process of updating their codes and is very progressive in terms of reducing carbon and moving towards a more electrified grid. So the codes are changing, we're well aware of it. This project will be under a new code. We anticipate permitting in 2024. It's, it's sooner than you all would want, not soon enough, I know, but it's, it's coming. So we will have to meet those goals that are outlined in the upcoming new energy codes. And then finally, one more clip, please. This is a high school project. This is a school project. We want to make sure the students in Wakefield understand what, what their building is made of, outdoor learning opportunities, incorporating wellness into the design of the building, use of healthy materials and helping educate about carbon and carbon literacy. Next slide, please. So to dig a little bit more into the MSBA requirements, so again, they require us to go beyond mass code. So if we get, we have to go 10% beyond for the energy code, but if we go 20%, we get two additional reimbursement points, which is significant when it comes to a project of this size. Water efficiency also needs to be beyond mass codes. Baseline is a certified project, although silver is very achievable and it's something we've heard the community talk about. And I think we will be moving that direction for a project goal. And finally, commissioning is something that the MSBA requires. Commissioning is really important. It ensures that your project performs as designed. And the MSBA does engage the commissioning consultants for, for the town. Next slide, please. So we've been working with lots of folks in town, not only with the Permanent Building Committee, but we've formulated a focus group which included members of your gas and light department. We met with the town engineers. We had a meeting with the Wakefield Environmental Sustainability Committee a week and a half ago. And finally, last Thursday night, we had a public forum, a community forum that focused on sustainability. And some of the things we heard from not only the public, but your engineering staff, including Mr. Tim O'Brien, was that lead silver should really be a minimum. People would love to see gold, it's achievable. And certainly something that we will track as we continue to develop the design. Consideration for an all-electric HVAC system. Again, the codes are moving in that direction anyway and there is definitely an interest in town in seeing that happen. Net zero energy readiness, again, in light of the new codes. And healthy materials. Again, these are just basic things that are really, really important to the health of the occupants. And one more slide, please, thanks. And beyond all the have-tos and the things that we, we know we can do, we'll continue through the design of the project to investigate, you know, more opportunities for extra-low water use or we already talked about net zero energy readiness, site design that's regenerative, healthy materials, lots of daylight, lots of natural air. These things do, have been documented to support and improve student performance. Low-carbon materials and again, that environmental literacy, being able to see how, in real time, how the building is performing and making sure that the students understand their building. And I was gonna turn it over to Brian, but I'm happy to, if there are any questions, take those now or we could wait till the end.
Actually, I think we should take questions out of each section. That'll be easier. Go ahead, Stephen.
In terms of the all-electric for HVAC, what, what opportunities do we see that we might have at the site?
Yeah, there are a couple that we are investigating. So there's essentially air source or ground source. We have heard interest in the community in geothermal. It's a very tight site, but we are investigating it. There is a significant amount of first cost associated with it. It's still on the table. And then the other direction is air source. And those systems are a little more approachable from a cost standpoint and certainly something that we're continuing to evaluate as we move, as we move ahead with the design.
Helen, can I ask a dumb question?
Oh, please do.
Can you just explain what geothermal means exactly?
Yeah, it's, so it's a, a system by, by which deep, deep wells are drilled into the ground, essentially using the, the temperature of the ground to, to, through water, right, through these deep wells to provide energy for the project. It's, it's something that Belmont has done. It does, again, come at a pretty high first cost because you must drill wells to determine if it's even feasible. You need to find the water, you need to go down deep enough to get to the right temperature and conditions. So it's, again, something that, that we've heard interest in and is still on the table, but we, we definitely need to do more, more work on that.
One important thing to say is it is a closed-loop system. So you're not, you know, taking any water from the ground or putting anything into the ground.
Thank you, that was helpful. Kevin?
Real quick question. You had mentioned that achieving silver, like status or certification, would result in two additional points. What would gold garner and what would that need to look like? What would we have to achieve in order to obtain gold?
Well, it's actually not achieving silver. It's, you have to go 20% beyond mass code to achieve silver, to get those additional points, sorry. Silver is, is through the, the U.S. Green Building Council. It's, the requirement from the MSBA for the additional reimbursement points is linked to outperforming mass code by 20% in terms of energy use.
And achieving certified in either LEED or New England chips.
Okay, thank you.
Is it talks about?
Solar?
Solar is definitely an option. Typically, we're, we're seeing projects move more towards PV-ready, photovoltaic-ready rather than actually incorporating it just due to cost. You know, we, we ensure that roof, roofs are properly structured to accept PV panels in the future. We'll definitely, you know, keep in mind the idea of parking canopies if they can be incorporated. But those systems tend to be a bit cost-prohibitive for most of our school projects.
And also, there's purchase agreements out there that allows communities to have them installed on their roof and they pay them back as energy costs.
So the upfront cost is more money. Does, how about the savings overall?
It depends on the size of the system. You know, how many, how many panels you can get and how much onsite energy you're able to generate.
Is there a comparison though? I mean, from, I forget the name of the other one that you said to use that you were kind of leaning more towards as opposed to solar? Is there a comparison between the two with long-term?
Both can be pursued. If, in an all-electric system, if you're using either geothermal or air-source heat pumps, PV would also just contribute to allowing you not to have to purchase your electricity from the grid. You'd be generating it onsite.
Also, there'll be life cycle cost analysis done on both so that you can see the comparison between the various
Options.
systems that you could use. So that way, I think you, you might be able to differentiate between the two a little bit more once you see those life cycle cost analysis.
Yeah, exactly. And that, that'll happen towards, towards the beginning of the next phase of the project.
Thank you.
So Helen, I, I think it's interesting because you didn't mention that until we brought it up, right? So you, you said geothermal and the other one? No, the air, air-driven or something, right?
Air source.
Right, air source, there we go.
Yeah, the third one's still on the table or is conventional, gas-fired. The third one's still on the table, is conventional, gas-fired. So those are the three that are still in the mix at the request of town engineering and some of the discussions we've been having.
So that makes it sound like solar is not in the mix? Or am I misunderstanding?
Solar would be
Typically not. We're required to make projects ready for solar, but again, unless we, or the town, is able to pursue it with pre-purchase agreements, again, it just, it's tending not to work into projects very well. I don't know if you have more data on that, Lynn?
It takes a lot of land area to provide enough photovoltaics in order to power a school like the size of the high school. And so we definitely don't have enough land to do that, and we'd have to use several sources in order to get us to net-zero energy, and it would have to be something like a geothermal or in combination with photovoltaics, and it might also be in combination with buying renewable energy. It will take a combination of several different methods in order to get to a full net-zero energy building.
That's helpful.
Yeah, it's interesting, because Gas and Light right now has an application out to have solar panels on the roof, so it's just, it's interesting to see another town building kind of going that avenue and then this not.
So there is something about placement and the, because I know
Like southerly facing.
Right, so there, and I believe when you guys showed plans around ago, right, that there was some solar pieces, if you built it on Walsh Field, but there wasn't solar included if it was renovating the existing building, so, but it sounds more like we don't have the space for solar to give what it, to provide what it needs to provide to get to net zero, and there's probably a more cost-effective way to get there, if that's ultimately the goal. That's what I think I'm hearing.
Yes, the last part of what you just stated is correct. We just don't have enough area for enough PV. However, I do, I think there has been some confusion around solar orientation, which is a little different. We're talking about a passive orientation of the building to, in particular with classrooms, and maybe Brian can really touch on this once he starts walking through the alternatives. It's how we can place the building on the site to maximize the sun to spaces where it's most needed, learning spaces, spaces where the students will be a good portion of the day. So there's solar orientation, which is a passive, a passive approach, and PV is more of a mechanical approach, if you will.
Got it. Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for plans.
Brian? That's my cue. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Black, design architect with SMMA. I am going to walk you through an update of where we are with the feasibility study in terms of design alternatives. I think this slide we're beginning with is a perfect opportunity to say, we are not designing a building yet. What we are doing is shaping some broad-stroke strategies and going to select an approach that's best for the project. At the end of the PDP stage, which is when we reported last to you, we had identified three options that would move forward into this stage. One is the code upgrade of the building. Two is an addition and renovation of parts of the building. And three is a new construction building, sited on Beasley Oval. So those are the three we'll focus on. Next slide, please. The code upgrade comes in as the lowest cost of the three options. You know, most likely, we are currently in the process of getting cost estimates on these alternatives, but we know that, you know, this is simply an upgrade of the existing building that will bring it up to the latest codes in terms of life-safety, energy, performance, mechanical systems. And so the downside of this option is that it doesn't deliver really the educational needs of the district, meaning reconfiguring of space, moving of walls, improving the quality of teaching and learning spaces, just not part of this option. And so it scores fairly low in terms of those factors. In addition, it would require swing space during the construction, which probably moves in phased segments around the building. So we'll move on to the next option, which is the addition renovation option, which also brings with it, because you're building on top of the existing school, whose footprint you can probably barely make out, the dashed light line that's underneath here, that, you know, during that construction, there has to be modular facility setup, and so there's quite a bit of disruption. But the payoff with this option is quite large. What we would do is renovate mainly the newer portions, the fieldhouse, the phys-ed areas, basement space, and really basically demolish and build new, the educational academic pieces, which would emerge as three new clusters, two of which stacking up to three stories tall. So getting kind of a more compact footprint, and the middle space is kind of a wedge of space, which is the dining commons, which acts as the hub of the whole project and really ties by circulation all of the elements, all of the clusters together. Next slide, please. Here, we can see what the simple massing of an addition renovation scheme would look like. On the left is looking over Farm Street. One of the features is carving back the front of the school, making it a more generous sort of arrival and place to gather and enter into the building. And there's a new sort of pavilion piece which drives through where the current courtyard is. So inserting this new heart of the building where there was a void, we think is a nice, compelling diagram. And also, in terms of experientially, looking to the right, looking over Beasley Oval, driving that space all the way through such that you can arrive through the school, go out the back, and arrive at the field environment on the east side of the school. There are lower terrace areas of the building that can overlook that scene. So this is the addition renovation. Onto the next slide, we're into the new construction options, and these have really engaged us for a large part of this phase. We were asked at the end of the last stage to look at some program clustering options, and so the next slide depicts some of those in terms of the broad strokes, again, the large clusters of program, how those might be located on the site relative to each other. And the two on the left dealing mainly with whether community space is up front and accessible, with academics sort of at the back of the school, or reversed, so that there's a more sort of pleasant and well-scaled presentation to the community with those classroom blocks. And then the larger spaces are sort of pushed into the back of the school, still accessed through the dining commons. The two options on the right deal with more about shaping the environment of the learning space, the classroom clusters, Humanities and STEM, which are the green clusters. And we've looked at two options, either facing them south, which will get a lot more sunlight, and faces hemlock, or if those face to the north. So next slide is looking at that first option that's got basically the gym out front, so it's easily found in the auditorium as well. So I think those factors are appreciated by the building committee and school leadership with the academics sort of on the east side and looking at the quieter side of the site. I think one thing, one component that's emerged over this process is the realization that a building sort of needs to have a civic presence, and so the presence of a very large gym and phys-ed sort of wing, if you will, 50 feet tall at the very presentation of the school, is something that is a little bit difficult architecturally, and so that's been appreciated by the whole team. Moving to option two is reversing the diagram, so putting the classroom clusters at the front. The gym and the auditorium are still accessed through the dining common space, which is the central kind of sliver that gets you into them. The presence of the building feels welcoming, and the downside of this is that the academics, because of the shape of the site that's available, and what you're not seeing here is that line again of the existing school, so as not to disrupt the school, we need to shape the building in this way. It becomes a very sort of linear north-to-south oriented building. As Helen was mentioning about solar orientation, this gives us a building that is very much oriented north-south, where the best passive strategy for a building is typically in the east-west direction, so that you have very predictable sun angles from the south hitting the building facade, and we can deal with those in very predictable ways. This orientation will not give us that as much. You get a lot of low sun at the west, and so a little bit more difficult to address. Next slide, please. So the third option, which is currently in the LEED, I would say, in terms of the number of positive remarks about it, it being a very clear diagram for the building with academics on one side and specialty spaces, community spaces on the other, that it gives the STEM and Humanities wings ability to open out into space, to connect to a space behind the building, so that there can be outdoor classrooms, et cetera. This is an option that has less opportunity in terms of access to the auditorium, but that is something that, another wrinkle that we'll look at in coming stages, of switching the gym with the auditorium perhaps on the right-hand side, so that the auditorium might even be accessed directly from outside. The final option is basically a mirrored image, so flipping the academics to the north. It would still have very ample, you know, light on that side. It puts the gym back in a central position to the whole campus, but again, it creates a little bit difficult condition in terms of the presentation of the school to the community as you enter, that it's difficult to scale down a mass of the size of the gym that we're talking about for this project. Next slide, please. So we're going to show you some simple diagramming of the plan that gives you a sense of how the building might be organized. Again, we're not designing the building yet, but in our minds, we have the sense of these neighborhoods, that we want to create environments that sort of couple the hands-on learning, technology labs, they have teacher meeting and planning space at the center as a resource, and then around the perimeter are the traditional classrooms, science labs, general classrooms. Special education is dispersed throughout the plans. So this is really just sort of shorthand for what you'll see in the next diagrams, and this is all coming out of the wonderful work that the whole district did on the visioning. Next slide, please, of creating these neighborhoods. And so this is integrated into the plans on the left side, clustering. The academics have the admin and guidance very nearby, so those resources are easy to access. When you go to level two on the lower right, the media center becomes the real hinge in the academic world. And then we've been updating the gym on the right-hand side of the diagram, because it needs to be a bit smaller than it had been shown, but meanwhile, other phys-ed space has been added in, so the mass of the building is very similar. We will need to raise the gym, in this instance, up to level two and put program under it, really because the site is extremely constrained. You will hear this over and over. There's little room to maneuver the building, and so we're having to be inventive in terms of how we stack things up. Next slide is showing, you know, the massing basically of this building, how these elements stack, and how they sit on the terrain of the site. There will have to be some terracing of the site, because there's a change in grade of about 10, 12 feet, but the intention is to really integrate this as one campus, to have it feel like, you know, you can walk from end to end, that there's not a sea of parking. There is quite a lot of parking that we're integrating, but it's not a known entity right now. This plan will change quite a bit as we move forward, but this, I hope, gives you a sense of the general layout. So to summarize, we're in a process of honing and putting the competing elements in a position where the building committee can make a decision in terms of which one of the options they will choose to bring forward into schematic design. If there are questions on the design, I'm happy to field those before we head it to Lynn.
I have a few questions, okay. A couple of questions. One, I think it was on option three and option four, there was a dotted line. Was that showing where Beasley Field used to be, or is that a wetlands buffer zone?
It's a wetland We do have wetlands to the east, and the dashed line represents 50 feet away from the wetland.
Okay, so it's
So the school is within the 100-foot buffer, but outside of the 50-foot. And that's a place where we feel like we need to be, and we're prepared, you know, to move forward with that approach. That's what the dashed line represents.
Okay, and has CONCOM been on those discussions, too?
We've not met with CONCOM yet, but we will shortly, and we're looking forward to talking about, you know, how to preserve what we can, and hopefully even build new resources and ways to interact and use the wetland as a teaching resource. And so we're really interested in CONCOM's thoughts on that and any other of the topics.
Okay, and then, I know you had just, I had written it down earlier, but you just mentioned about parking. I'm not seeing parking on there. I know that you said that, you know, these are all works in progress, but wondering where, if we're going to be losing spaces, if we're going to be gaining spaces, how that's going to all be laid out.
So there's a program that's been established, which is, I believe, 60 additional spaces, roughly, from what is existing.
Okay.
I think the number now is 269, and we're shooting for 330. However, as this develops, we're in the most early stage of this. The gray areas on the plan represent parking and roads. So, you know, we are, the more favorable quality-wise option for the site has more parking close to the building, and so we're trying to maintain a campus feel to all of this and not have a huge parking lot outside the front door. And so we're going to have to be inventive with places that we find parking, but we have the number that we're striving for, and we'll update the committee and leadership and all of you in terms of how we're doing along the way with meeting that goal.
Okay, and is that goal something you guys said, or is that in compliance with 19041B?
So we are exceeding code requirements.
Okay.
We met with leadership We met with leadership a little while back and established several metrics in terms of the adequate or appropriate quantity for a school of this size. And so, that's how we arrived at the number that exceeds the existing number. We're not designing to, you know, the largest assemblies and events that are happening.
Right.
But we're providing a reasonable amount of parking for the day-to-day. And I think leadership feels comfortable with where we are in regard to that.
Okay, and then one, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to state that the three hundred and thirty does not include the hundred and one that exists at Landryan that I know students park in as well. So, there is some overflow parking there that hasn't been counted.
Okay, so those will remain?
Yes.
Okay, and then, my last question, when you talk about, I believe it's when the field is in the front and the grade changes, are you proposing retaining walls, or?
Yes, it's likely there will be some amount of retaining walls. It's a little bit unresolved in our rendering. I apologize, the walls are not meant to be raised up above the ground. But there is a grade change. What we want to try to do is to do that gradually. Because there, you know, there's about a twelve-foot difference from front to back, I believe. And so, if we can split that into two or three steps, it will be less perceived and potentially the cut-and-fill cost, the excavation cost and export of material could be reduced if we do it smartly.
Probably look better than having a twelve-foot wall.
Yes, exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could ask, in both current sort of leading options, is the plan to realign Nahant with?
Correct.
I always forget the name of that street.
Farm Street.
Yep.
Not Farm.
In every design.
Hemlock.
You'll see right here, that's the straightening and aligning that and making that intersection.
Which is how we end up with parking over there.
The land reclaimed would be parking right there.
Looking to relieve that headache that is that intersection.
Yes.
Wonderful.
So, there are two sub-options that are being looked at. One is a roundabout and another is a signalized intersection. So, those options will be looked at more closely with a traffic consultant as we move things along.
I know we're Massachusetts, but we can stay away from a roundabout, I'm sure.
I'm a fan of the roundabout.
I had heard that there was issues with the Hemlock because it's leading up to the Bracart. Have we like gotten, because it's DCR's?
Yeah, it's DCR.
Is it DCR-owned? Is that kind of, has that been overcome, or does that continue to be an ongoing issue?
So, there's two pieces there. We did have an initial conversation with DCR about realigning Hemlock. And in fact, it's something they've had on their list for quite some time. They recognize the difficulty of that intersection with Farm. So, there's lots of parts and pieces that we don't yet know related to how that might work. But just to let you know that we did have an initial conversation with them. And then, of course, the Metro Tech project is creating a new access to that school. So, that will also help alleviate traffic further down, further down the road, so to speak.
That's good to hear that DCR was open to it. Because I don't, I think the last time that that came up, there hadn't been any conversation yet and that there was some concern that there would be concern. So, that's great to hear.
I think there was actually even, like, back to parking, there was some talk about some, like, sort of looking at the approach of the upper Landryan parking and how it sort of approached the campus. Maybe taking some look at how that would be incorporated in a more aesthetic way.
In this plan?
Sort of the plans in general.
In general.
What can be done.
Go ahead, Ken.
I have a couple of questions. The first is, in the ad-reno version, it would require swing space. And at Thursday's meeting, I think it was anticipated that it would take two and a half years. So, would that mean in that version, you know, students for two and a half years would be in the swing space? Or can you talk about what that would look like were the town were to go in that option?
So, that'll be a phased approach. So, not everyone would be uncomfortable at the same time for two and a half years, which is probably not that great of an answer. But certainly, a phased construction is more invasive. So, you know, if this were the option that we were going to pursue, we'd work closely with everyone to figure out the best logical way to make it happen. You know, again, it would be phased. You know, certain pieces would be done and certain spaces would be taken offline. So, again, I couldn't tell you how many students would be displaced at a time. But there are certainly ways to do it. It's possible, it's a little more uncomfortable.
Helen, can you share with the committee the amount of new space that would be added in the ad-reno?
Yes. So, your current, the current school building has just over two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So, two hundred and fifty-four thirty is what you currently have. The ad-reno scheme would increase the building size by approximately nine thousand square feet.
So, but in the new construction we're building, the newly constructed spaces would be, we would be building about fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four percent of new construction, correct?
Right, so, yes.
Thank you.
Great, and then, my last question is, because I know we have some that have contacted us about the fieldhouse, and we have a coach who would love a bigger fieldhouse. And I know, again, it was talked about on Thursday and other meetings that I've been a part of for the school building committee. But for those who are maybe only watching this and didn't have an opportunity, I know we looked into, you know, the feasibility of a larger fieldhouse, I think thirty thousand square feet. But that doesn't seem like that's going to be reasonable. Can that kind of be explained, maybe for someone wondering, why the town maybe wouldn't pursue a larger fieldhouse?
Well, MSBA has a policy that they will not participate in any project that builds a fieldhouse because their focus is primarily on educational spaces. However, we did ask the question of MSBA, would they allow a fieldhouse to be constructed in conjunction with either adjacent to or attached to the high school project that we would expect their participation in? And they did come back to us and left it somewhat open-ended. But in the meantime, the leadership group and the staff at high school worked together to come up with making sure that the spaces that we have included in our current space summary provides for all the programs that currently exist in the high school. We are still talking about and looking at how we might be able to do a fieldhouse, if that's the desire of the town. But it will be one hundred percent on the town to build it and construct it. And we would have to convince MSBA that we could do it in a separate way, both financially and from a schedule perspective, in a way that would not impact the construction of the new high school. So, they asked us to answer a lot of questions, and I think we're still in the process of talking about, can we live with the space summary program that we came up with for the physical education spaces? Or do we need to try to go to that extra step? Part of that is also looking at what the cost would actually be to construct a fieldhouse. And that's going to be part of the decision-making process as well. As Brian said earlier, we're currently out with estimators, two estimators now, to look at the cost of the new school and some of these cost components such as the fieldhouse.
Thank you.
I have another dumb question.
I'm tapped, Lynn. There's also a space constraint that we are, you know, starting to grapple with in terms of this idea of a parallel project. And we've just begun to study that. But as you can see from the site, something would have to give in terms of creating space for such a large element to be placed. But we will sort that out and we'll report to you again.
Can you guys explain the difference between PE space and a fieldhouse? Because I'm assuming the normal plan has like a gymnasium of sorts. So, what is the difference between a fieldhouse and the gym space that you're proposing?
Right, and typically, when you talk about phys ed space and teaching space, you're talking about teaching stations. And so, typically, MSBA template will start out with a twelve thousand square foot gym. And that gym size is appropriate to have two cross courts so that you can divide your gym in half and have two classes being constructed at the same time. What we call phys ed alternatives are other spaces that can also be used for gym class or phys ed or for wellness class. So, you look at the portfolio of those spaces altogether as supporting the educational aspect of the school. A gym can be larger than twelve thousand. And currently, we're carrying an eighteen thousand square foot gym, which allows for three cross courts, so three teaching stations. We also have four thousand square feet of phys ed alternatives, so that can be divided in two. So, currently, we're tracking for five teaching spaces in the gym. And that may be in excess of what is required by educational needs per se. So, athletic needs typically go well beyond the academic and educational needs. And so, those are the pieces that we're trying to kind of fit together and satisfy MSBA on one hand with their limitations, but also make sure that the district has all the resources it needs spatially.
So, I still don't understand what a fieldhouse, why a fieldhouse is different.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So, a fieldhouse typically has a running track in it. And that's the element, because of the turning radius of the track, that drives the size, the width of the building to be a certain dimension. And so, we start out at thirty thousand square feet because that's about as tight a radius as you can safely run on a track. There are much larger fieldhouses out there. But that's sort of the minimum. And it's the size that we designed for Swamp Scott High School some years ago, about fifteen years ago, was the last time that MSBA supported a large fieldhouse. So, typically, you're talking about indoor track in a fieldhouse with courts inside of it.
That makes sense, thank you.
Sorry to be long-winded.
No, that's okay.
So, the fieldhouse we have now isn't really like...
I was going to say, our fieldhouse is not how they describe a fieldhouse.
But there are lanes in the fieldhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't notice them when you walk in.
Oh, but it's not a full-size track?
No. It absolutely, no, you absolutely cannot.
And remaining quite, oh, timeline, schedule.
Getting there.
So, I'll give you a quick overview of the schedule. We're currently in the second phase of the feasibility study, which is MSBA's module three. It's called the preferred schematic report. And the intent of this phase is to kind of document the process of how we get down to the options that we narrowed down to after the preliminary design program. And we're trying to get to a preferred option to carry forth into the schematic design phase of the schedule. We're currently doing estimates now. Our next, the next time we come to you, we'll be able to share costs of the various options. But we're marching toward a deadline for the preferred schematic report of submitting to MSBA on May fourth. And that will be in preparation of the MSBA Board of Directors meeting that is scheduled for June twenty-second. From the time we submit to the Board of Directors meeting, we'll go through a thorough review with MSBA. They'll invite us to a feasibility assessment, I mean, Facilities Assessment Subcommittee meeting, where we will present the project to them and present our preferred option. Once everybody at MSBA is in agreement with the option that we ended up choosing, they'll make a recommendation to the MSBA Board of Directors, and they'll vote to approve the PSR and to have us proceed into schematic design. The schematic design will follow after the June twenty-second MSBA Board of Directors meeting. And this will get us to a firm project scope, schedule, and budget in which we'll present to the MSBA. They'll vote on it and they'll identify their level of participation on the project. And then, the town will have to then go out and get funding approval on the project. Right now, we are scheduled to do that in early 2023, hopefully in January timeframe. Does anyone have any questions on the schedule?
Actually, I have a quick question, but it's more, I think, for Tom and Kevin. A January timeframe is going to require a special election?
It will. There'll have to be a town meeting vote and then a special election.
There is an opportunity to vote in advance of MSBA if you wanted to have the vote with your annual town meeting in November. Or, you know, but typically, most people like to see what MSBA's participation is prior to a vote.
Yeah, I think we'd be hard-pressed to bring that to town without real numbers.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the math associated with MSBA's, you know, contribution. So, it would be very, be very difficult, Sal.
Okay.
Does MSBA pay for that special election?
Sure they do not. Oh, I did have one question about the swing space. MSBA does not pay for that, is that correct? That is, I am correct that they do not?
No, no, they don't.
They don't?
No.
So, that's one of the things that I think when you talk about that as an option and you look about at the total cost, you need to think, we need to be talking about the cost that's involved with two and a half to three years of swing space. Not that that's going to be, I can't imagine that the difference between the two, that that will make a big difference. But people need to realize that that's not something that we're going to, that we have to fund that at a hundred percent. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for all this work.
Thank you all.
Thank you, nice.
Good night.
Good night.
Congratulations, Dr. Lyons.
Thank you, Brian. So, we have traveled to, we've visited a few high schools in the area. We visited Winchester High School, Belmont High School, and Somerville High School. SMMA has designed Somerville High School in a very tight kind of spot that they had to build that building. And one of the things that SMMA is known for are the details. The details and the finishes. I think that they really, I'll be honest with you, I think that they are the best architectural firm for school buildings. You know, they're one and one or one and two in the state. They're really remarkable, and they do everything in-house. Whereas, some of the groups that we've met with initially would sub out a lot of the work, sub out the mechanical work, they do everything in-house. So, all of the work that they're doing in regard to feasibility work, instead of having people coming... instead of having people coming and going, it's all done internally. They've been very thorough, very helpful in regard to helping us develop our educational plan. And, and I'm really pleased with the information that was just sent to the MSBA for a second time, for a review. You know, one of the difficult parts is the, the limitations that MSBA will set on new construction. And, and that's a difficult thing because you can't get whatever you want. You know, this conversation about a fieldhouse and, and this, you know, ideally, we would, we would like to build a 30,000 square foot fieldhouse with a track with courts on the, on the inside. That would be ideal for us. And so, but the MSBA is, has said that they will participate. For a school our size, the starting, the starting size of a gymnasium is 12,000 square feet. And you can build up to eight, 18,000 square feet, which is just probably just about 1,000 square feet larger than what we have, right? And so, so we're, we're in that space, you know, and which, in, in the, in, with their kind of guidelines, we've, we've been able to work on our educational plan and get additional spaces added that will support athletics in ways that we're currently supporting in a new facility. So our architects and our, and our kind of project management group has really helped us develop those additional spaces as well as the PBC. I think Joe Bertrand and Chip Tarbell have been just tenacious in regard to just not, just, they're unrelenting in kind of really just real, advocating for what students need and what the schools and the, and the community needs. So we're, we're working, we're progressing, but, but more to follow, right? More to follow.
Is that something that we could get grants, not grants, sorry, donations or sponsorships for?
So this is, this is a big question that we get, Amy. So what if someone just donated a fieldhouse? Or what if someone made a donation, you know? And so, so the answer is no. And the reason why is because if, if, if anyone were to donate money, first of all, there, there is a limitation on the size of a fieldhouse. That's part of the guidelines that, that MSBA has. And, and their guidelines are clear in that they won't participate at all in the project. Like, you know, four years of work and they, they, you know, you run the risk of them pulling out altogether. Or if you were to get a donation, let's say someone wanted to make a donation for a performing arts center, the MSBA will decrease the amount of the grant equal to the amount of the donation, right? And so, so we, we've, any, any combination that can be discussed or put on the table, I think PBC put it on the table.
Even like a sponsorship?
Sponsorship, donation, I mean, we've, I think, any, in any way that PBC could push, I think that they're pushing, they're still pushing. And so right now, we've given all of the information back to the MSBA to see, you know, what they come back with for us. But yeah, that's where.
But what I heard was that there might not be space to put a fieldhouse too.
Correct.
Right.
But if, but if someone donated, say, a fieldhouse on all that land on Doyle, would that be a separate project?
That the town would fund independently?
So that, that was, that was a question as well. And so I don't know that we brought that back to the MSBA. And so basically you'd be asking them to, to build something minus a fieldhouse? Is that what I heard you say?
There is no fieldhouse, there's just a gymnasium.
So, okay, so when I say fieldhouse, I'm referring to, so I'm using the terms interchangeably, I'm sorry.
I'm using like an indoor track, like wouldn't it be great? Yeah, sports complex.
Yeah.
But not near the, the high school, cause then it wouldn't be associated.
So, correct, correct, yeah, that would be.
And there'd be no state funds for that?
No, we're talking.
No, saying if you got a donation or something, it would be something separate.
This is getting exciting.
Right, right, stop the fundraising.
Yeah.
This is like, yeah.
I'm trying to wonder where kids are gonna go sledding. By talking about the Doyle and we're gonna tear up the back of the high school, where's the new sledding at?
So I don't know if anyone else has any questions about that. You know, Amy, your questions about the wetlands and, and all of those are great questions. And those are things that are gonna be highlighted in feasibility.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Thank you so much for your patience and questions there. And, and moving on through my agenda, just, I'd like to give an update on the logo committee and the work that has been done at the high school. So we've had, you're part of the committee, Amy? And so we have four adults and community members that are part of the committee. We have 10 students, so that's 14. We have kind of a host of teacher leaders and others that have participated. And so they have reviewed, I wanna say 12 logo options?
Give or take, it's because the meetings have not been on a consistent schedule, I've had to miss a few of them, so.
Okay, so the, the last count I had in terms of numbers of, of options that have been looked at, I wanna say 12. That has been narrowed down to three. And so Amy has moved those to, to me. And, you know, I was working with her, I'm just refining some of the artwork. One of the logos was a drawing made by a student. And before we moved that forward, what we wanted to do was to just kind of clean up that artwork a little bit. So we kind of brought that back to our Morgan Ginotti and here at our art department. And, and she just kind of cleaned up the image a little bit. And then we're kind of just, we wanna present that back to the student that created this to make sure that that is what his, he envisioned and, and his creation. And so we just wanna make sure that, that we're, we're aligned there. Then what we're gonna do is we're gonna look at the three options, review the policy in the Policy and Communications Subcommittee. Then we will be moving it forward to the larger committee. But the students did a great job with this. We're grateful for the participation of our community members. And, and I think we'll have more news after we review this at, at Policy and Communications.
So, so the full committee gets the three finalists or one?
So we're gonna review the policy, I, I think we're gonna move one forward. And so is what I think we'd like to do. But we'll, we'll review all that in Policy and Communications and kind of advocate here as we move it, move it forward.
Are we gonna have a discuss, a time to discuss kind of the committee itself? The overview, the stuff that's been brought forward?
When, when you say stuff that's been brought forward?
Like the, the images?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Now or?
No.
Okay.
I, no, no, we're, I still, we wanna work with it in the Subcommittee and we wanna make sure that that student, it kind of signs off before we move.
No, 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 I don't mean to pick of those three at just comments of myself being on the committee and others that I've heard just about certain things about it.
Sure, I think any feedback that you have for me or for us, I think we're always, we always welcome that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now?
If you'd like to, if you'd like to provide it now.
Well, just one of the main things with the three options that are there, one of, the way that I read the policy said that a committee will be, will be put together. And that committee will be the ones that come up with logos that'll get presented to you and then to the larger group. So one of the ones that was pushed forward is one that was already created before all of this mess started. So I'm just wondering why that one is gonna be, or was pushed forward. I know that they took a vote on it, but there's been no talk since that vote. So I'm just wondering why that one was being pushed forward when that's not something that was created by somebody on the committee or during the committee time? So that's just a concern I have.
Yeah, I think we can talk about that in committee and maybe address your question
Okay.
when we move forward.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts or questions?
The three options, were they all student-created?
No, no, they were not all student-created. I think two of the three were, right?
No, one, one.
One was community, Amy?
One was community.
Yeah, one community, one student and, and one that had been used before.
Okay.
Right, had been in place before. But we'll, we'll cover all this in a slide deck. And, and I wanna talk with the Policy and Communication Group, maybe about having some members of the committee that took part in this actually come and talk about the experience and, and kind of why they voted for what they voted for, what they found attractive, et cetera, et cetera.
To the greater committee?
To the, to the school committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, like, you know, just, you know, there were 10 students that took part in this and, and four community members, but, you know, it'd be nice to hear from them, you know, in terms of their experience, what they would like to move forward, what they found kind of compelling about the choices that they made and why they did that. So that's, that's kind of what we're thinking about again. I don't wanna get ahead of our agenda with Policy and Communication, but that's where we're at. Yes, sir.
Just to your, to your last point again around the process, I would very much like to hear from the students.
Yeah.
So if, if there's gonna be any sort of forum or any sort of discussion, you know, something that really speaks to their experience, speaks to even a, a conversation around what were the, what were the 12? What were the eight? What were the four? What were the? You know, how did, how did it work and what were folks' thoughts around it?
Yeah.
Like the more, the more, the more organic that we can show that the process was and the more, you know, open we can, we can show. And I think student voices are critical of them.
I agree, I agree. So there'll be more to follow on this?
Yep.
Thanks.
So we took Tim's capital comments out of order. And so the last thing on my list is just any final questions regarding the FY '23 budget before we make a motion?
Uh, why don't we go ahead and make the motion and then we can have a discussion?
Is there a slide deck or we're just going for it?
All right, I move the school committee approve an FY '23 Wakefield Public Schools budget of $47,607,77 as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second and discussion. So Doug, last we met, we had put out here some discussion around high school.
Yep.
Intervention, support and kind of had asked at the Subcommittee level for you to go back and do some work on that. You reported back to us last week and kind of where that landed. But I think it would be good for the whole committee to kind of hear that.
Sure.
Kind of where we landed.
Sure, um, so the, the questions, just to get whoever might be watching, just to get you all up to, to speed. The question last week was, do we need additional resources for math intervention at the high school, right? There was a.
Not necessarily math, but I think it was.
I know I questioned specifically math skills, but then Suzie actually questioned generally, the budget was elementary-heavy and we're hearing they need more help with the high, the students need more.
Support.
Support, so that's.
Yeah, academic.
Yeah, academically.
Academic support.
Yes.
Yeah, and so after those questions were brought up here, we kind of reconvened as an administrative group and, and looked at that was, which is what the committee asked. Would we go back and take a look at this? And so myself, Cara, Rosie and Amy McLeod have had several conversations in the, in the last few weeks about academic support. How does that happen? And, and kind of the feedback that we've gotten, feedback that I've gotten from Rosie around special education services, feedback that I've gotten from Amy around regular ed and special ed, is that they feel very strongly and I feel confident with them and the information that they've provided to, to both myself and Cara. I feel confident that through the grouping and scheduling work that's happening in special education, right? The grouping of students and the scheduling of students, that we can provide effective academic support during LSEs. And we also can provide support for students after school, outside of that for, for regular ed students. And so I, I feel like in, in terms of resources, we have, right now we have positions, two positions that at this point are unfilled at the high school, that we're working to fill. Those additional personnel are gonna be instrumental in helping in those spaces. We also have, so if, and if we need additional funds beyond those resources, we also have SRR funds available. I don't believe that we're gonna need to tap into SRR funds for this. I do think with the current structures that we had, we have in place and the work that Rosie and Amy are doing, along with David Robinson in guidance, that I think we can kind of meet the academic intervention need at the high school at this point in time.
So do we think that the changes, because I feel like we're, we are mixing special ed with gen ed students, right? So there's some, and maybe it's just because I'm not fully understanding it, but I know there's changes that are gonna happen on the special ed side that we think will help lots of, lots of things. But will that help the gen ed students as well, those changes that happen on the special ed side? Cause I think the specific ask here is around gen ed students who need help with reading and writing and math. I know we talked about like, high school students aren't gonna wanna come certainly before school and probably not after school, right? So it, it almost feels like the only time that you can get those kids support is kind of in school where they would, you know, wanna participate. So I guess I'm just trying, I, I really wanna take like special ed out of it unless I'm missing something about how the special ed changes are going to impact gen ed students.
I make the distinction between special ed and general education because often when we talk about intervention services, I think sometimes the viewing audience or when people hear intervention services, they make, I think sometimes make the, or get this idea that it is for special education and not for regular education, we should just say for all students, right? And so in, in terms of the support that students need, you know, I, in, in talking with the people that are gonna provide that support, they're informing us that they think they can meet that expectation without additional resources. Now, this is the school committee budget. If school committee feels strongly that we have created a budget that advantages preschool, elementary and middle differently than the high school, you know, we can add to the budget. But in terms of meeting, being given a task, going back and, and having the appropriate conversations, I think at this time, we feel like we have the personnel and, and the systems to meet those expectations. And we also have that backstopped with the SRR grants. But again, you know, if, if the committee feels differently, I think I'm, we're open to that conversation.
What are the two positions? They were vacant all year?
So we, we have, correct me if I'm off, two special education positions.
So they just, they were posted and no one applied?
So they, they've been unfilled, so they're part of our budget. And we posted them early and could not fill them, correct?
But those are special ed.
But those are special ed.
Correct, they're not regular.
But even, I understand they're vacant, but still someone had to pick up the work.
Correct.
So you're posting, so they're in the budget. So where did that cost savings go all year?
Oh, my goodness.
It stays in the salary line.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll see it in June when I do budget transfers.
Okay.
So it's interesting, cause those two heads are more special ed heads. So to me, I feel like we're still not addressing the gen ed thing. That said, you did what we asked.
I did.
You went back, you had the conversation with the principal. If you guys feel like it's covered, and, but, you know, we also, we heard from the WEA president that there were some concerns about supporting high school students around reading, writing and math. So if, if you guys feel confident that we've got that covered, I'm good. Cause we asked you to go back and revisit it, you revisited it. If we find ourselves in a situation, like you said, we've got this backstop of SRR funds, don't necessarily wanna use it for that, but, but it sounds like you've done what we asked you to do.
So we, we have a pretty lengthy, detailed budget process, right? And, and we feel like we've done more than our due diligence at every level to really look at what we need. You know, do we always feel like we need more resources? Of course. But in regard to meeting the priorities in a given year and a given moment, I feel like we've, with the budget that we're proposing, I feel like we're really striking that line, right? Additionally, like let's, let's be clear, we're also being supported outside of this budget with ARPA funds from the town to fund additional positions, for additional positions. We're looking at that helping over the course of three years. We also have kind of a verbal commitment from the town that we'll be looking to kind of reestablish the stabilization fund, the special education stabilization fund, which is an additional $230,000. So in, in terms of the full scope of our budget and, and kind of the additional. So, in, in terms of the full scope of our budget and, and kind of the additional positions. And what we're working with, uh, both through regu, our regular day budget and our grants. Um, I, I feel like we're, this is, this is a good budget for us. Again, please. You know, if the committee said, you know, Doug, I think we should dedicate a hundred thousand dollars to high school intervention services, uh, the committee has every right to make that addition. And add it to the budget and move forward.
So, so the, the budget, the high school requested the math skills, E L I skills blocks at sixty-nine, seven, twenty-seven. And that didn't make it into the budget, correct?
So that came out of the budget forum and we spoke to staff and they talked about having another special ed, um, math skills position. And that was not funded in this, no.
So this sixteen, so if we, so if we added that.
That would have been in addition to.
Right, would that bring us over the four point nine nine?
Yes.
Is that why it wasn't added? Because you didn't want to go over?
No, absolutely not.
I just feel like the teachers and the students are, are asking craving. And, and the admin, admin keeps saying, we're all set, we're all set, so I don't know who, you know. I don't, I don't have a high school student, so this is kind of not my.
So I think one thing we talked about at the, the facilities, finance of facilities, subcommittee meeting was the program that was run over the summer. Where we used the acceleration grant and that was aimed at the kids coming, the kindergarteners coming in and I believe it was ninth grader.
Tenth grade group.
Right, nine, incoming tenth graders.
Yep.
For math support. They didn't get a ton of interest of students signing up for that. That's the only in, indication in my mind that we have of whether kids would participate and stuff kind of outside of school. The one, the, the sixty-nine that you just brought up, that's more special ed support. I'm kind of on this about not be, not, it's a gen ed thing, not a special ed thing. I feel like we've talked a lot about changes that are going to be made on the special ed side to kind of address, um, needs there. So, I, I'm not sure, if I thought that that was gen ed dollars, I might say like, let's make, let's get that sixty-nine thousand dollars in there. But, I mean, at the end of the day, we were talking about, um, is there time in the day? Where would you put it? Would you have teachers? Would they come early? Would they come late, right? Like, it's a little different than elementary schools where you can get kids to stay after school. I think you're just not going to see that at the high school level, so you've got to fit it into the day.
What's that L S, what's that block called?
L S C.
That's like a study hall I used to call it.
But that's.
No, L S C is for, it's a special education support block.
A S C is the, the.
So the A S C block, what, what are we doing with students that couldn't, we schedule students? Gen ed students for help that block?
So, we could, but we don't, so teachers are scheduled during that time? And, and students also have choice during that time, right? So when I say choice, so could we create?
Something on their phones or do homework.
You know, I, I don't know that in our A S C students are all watching Netflix. I think that's a little harsh.
No, 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 no.
But, yeah, I, okay.
Yeah, there's lots of kids doing homework and studying.
Yeah, right.
Lots of kids studying together.
Uh, again, I, I'm, I'm ready for, if you guys, like.
But we can't tell you to go spend money that you're not sure you can spend. Like, I think we asked you to go research whether you thought there was a need there and you're coming back and you're telling us that there's not. I, I don't think we tell you to go spend more money if you don't think you can.
What I'm telling you is.
There's a need.
Right, what I'm telling you is, there's a need and I think we can make it work with the resources that we have. So I just want to be clear that.
Yeah.
For our audience, there, and we're not saying that there's not a need. Cara, I know you've been.
I, no, I think, I think the work that we're doing within special ed, looking at the structures and systems, just by default, supports general ed as well. I think we have an eye on, um, creating just more, I don't want to say thoughtful, but just more strategic groupings of students, um, to be also more compliant with a, a balanced classroom that is more manageable, um, for all of our teachers. I think, right now what we're finding is that we're limited, um, in the amount of sections that are supported. Which by default, um, I think over, kind of overloads the class with, um, a significant amount of needs within one section. Which, um, it oftentimes, no matter how many staff you have in, in the class, that makes it kind of unmanageable in terms of a, a teaching model. So what, we have an eye on, um, grouping students more strategically, um, based on disability profile. Based on modifications, accommodations, um, and having no more than thirty percent of our, our general ed classrooms. With students with special needs, so that we can provide a higher level of support to those students as well as the general ed, um, models within the classroom. And we're also with that looking at the structure of our LSEs. We did hear, um, I'm not, you know, a hundred percent sure that it was, um, the request on, on skill development was strictly gen ed. I think it was across the board. If we see students who are, have skill deficits, which make it more challenging for them to participate in their C P level or whatever level class, that we do want to provide more targeted instruction. And I think in our conversations, we've also talked about the need to identify that, um, through students' I E Ps. And LSEs would be a spot to have that be more targeted. Um, so there's a lot of conversation happening about the model that's been in existence at the high school. And I think by default, it will support general ed students as well.
That, Cara, that was exactly what I was looking for, was how are, how are those changes in the special ed area going to in, help gen ed students indirectly, directly, right? And what you just said is exactly what I, I think I, I needed to hear, because it is going to impact gen ed students. It's not, you know, interventionist services at, at its core, but it is going to help.
But that is, isn't a done deal yet. It's still in the planning phase.
Well, I mean, I think it, it comes down to what, how we need to staff. So we're, we're talking, we've worked with eighth to ninth, we're, we're starting, obviously I think change happens bottom up. We've had conversations with our eighth grade team, our special ed coordinator, our administration around recommendations that are being made eighth to ninth. Because I think we were finding, um, that, so, you know, just the recommendations weren't quite matching. Either the Galvin experience or, um, what was needed. And we were also just trying to, to really dig into who are our students? What do they need? What is their disability area? What are the modifications they need? So that it's not as general in terms of recommendations of, you know, student on I E P equals co-tod equals this level of staffing. It's really digging in more, um, to what students need for curriculum modifications. You can be a, a student on I E P that doesn't necessarily need support in the inclusion setting, but maybe you need a, academic support for organization or writing skills, just trying to dig in to make things a little bit more student centered and, um, specific. And so we've done that work, um, the eighth grade team has done a really nice job of really talking about who our students are coming up and what are the support services they will need to access the classes here at the high school and to be successful. And we've asked them to, to group, um, in smaller numbers. So that, like I said, we're targeting no more than thirty percent of each class being, you know, including students with disabilities. Because we think that that makes for a nicely balanced, manageable class structure. Um, with high expectations all around, um, you know, high level of conversation, high level, um, of support as well. You know, I think when, when we start getting into students that are unable to access college prep classes. Then that's a different conversation through the I E P team, if students need, um, really individualized support, um, through their program or substantially separate, uh, classes. Um, that's kind of like the layers of special ed, but when we're talking about students who, um, have the ability, want to be in general ed, college prep classes, we can, we can support that, we think differently. And I think the addition of two more special ed teachers is just going to make it, um, that much more successful. But it's change and change is hard. And I think, you know, we're trying now to, to provide concrete examples of what this can look like. But, um, the way the I E Ps are written, um, is all, we're not looking at a reduction of services, we're just looking at spreading students out further. Um, because sometimes, you know, you have two, two teachers and a para, but you have, you know, if eighty percent of the class is students with a wide range of needs, that makes for like kind of a, it makes for a very challenging instructional situation. So that's, that's the problem that we're trying to solve and I think we're in a good place to get there. And I do think, you know, we've, we've mapped out, um, you know, our next level is to map out mock schedules of what this could look like for, for special ed staff. All within contractual obligations, all within the roles and responsibilities of a special ed teacher. So it's just a different way of thinking about it. But it's not anything that, you know, I just don't want there to be, you know, the I E Ps drive our staffing. What is, what happens at the team meeting, what happens, um, based on, you know, students' disabilities and area of need. That really drives how we're staffing, as opposed to us trying to say like, here's our model. This is, this, we've got to shift that up every year depending on who our students are.
So could we get a report back in like August or when, before school starts to say we did hire these, the schedules are set? Because I know one of the other thing that came out of the meetings is that the high school's schedules weren't set in a timely manner. I don't, I don't know what the.
Yeah.
And then separately, last meeting, we talked about E L L. How, how is that at the high school? Are, are we meeting all those needs within next year's budget?
So, we just, we met earlier this week to talk about, um, support and help. And, and what that would look like at elementary, right? Which, which ended up being one of the elementary F T Es, right? We had, one of the elementary F T Es, we had decided that we were able to split the F T E and, and create a point three. An increase in someone's position in, that existed at Walton for counseling. Um, take point five and increase someone at.
At Greenwood.
So that's point eight, which leaves us with point two. And so we're looking at, um, potentially increasing someone's time in E L, for our E L L support. Possibly point two, but that is not committed at this point in time. In regard to your question about reporting back, I think I would like nothing more, and that's exactly what we should be doing. When we're, when we're talking about the budget, it should be a dynamic process where we're coming back to the table, saying this is where we are. And, and, you know, when, when we have needed to adjust in the past, um, and we've needed to make changes in regard to personnel or assignments, we've discussed that with our labor subcommittee. Um, if we have needed additional positions, you know, we've gone back to this, to the labor subcommittee, had this conversation. There has to be, uh, you know, it's pretty well vetted, right? And that, what I mean that is, by that is, you know, we talk about budgeting for the knowns and the unknowns. So, uh, based on the knowns right now, I think we feel positive about the proposed budget that we're moving forward. If, in terms of if things change and, and if we're not making the progress that we need to and there's a reason for that. And, and that conversation changes, we should be able to advocate differently. But I, I do think it's our responsibility, um, to not only just report back. But also talk about the progress that we're making, progress that kids are making, but also the progress that adults and systems are making. But, that's, I know that's a long answer, but the, the short answer, Amy, is yes.
Yeah, I think like a, maybe in future meetings or next year, a head count. Like, this is the, these are our new hires.
Yep.
These, you don't have to put the names, this is how many left, these are our vacancies. I think that's something that we as a committee should review, you know, bi-monthly or something.
Yeah.
Because we didn't know there was two empty sped positions at the high school all year until now.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
If we're just going to try and fill those positions again in next year, is there anything that makes us think the landscape is going to change that we'd be successful where we weren't in the previous year?
Um, I think we have a little bit more runway, right? And I think that the, the labor market is changing. I think it's different now than it was a year ago at this time with COVID, to be completely honest even.
Sure.
So I think that in and of itself is going to change the number of applicants that we have for any number of our positions.
Okay.
If you know anybody, let us know.
First call I'd make.
I had asked about math interventionists and the eight thousand dollar line item being, um, equal across the elementary schools. Were we able to do anything about for the Woodville and the, the Dolberghs bigger schools?
We kept it the same. We went back and we asked the principals and they felt pretty confident with that number.
With that, okay.
And again, they have the ability to move between their lines.
Yep.
So if they see it trending up or down, um, they can do that as the year goes.
Correct. Go ahead, Tom.
Excuse me, thank you. I, I think, um, I think this is really good information and I want to thank, you know, thank you for the follow-up. One of the things that, that really strikes me as part of the process has, has evolved, which again, is pretty extensive. Beginning in the fall and running through, uh, lots and lots of meetings and, 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 and conversations. One of the things that, that I think is important is that we have brought, we, not only the school committee, but the, but the community and, and the, and the teaching staff. Have brought forward some, some needs and I, and identified concerns. And, uh, and I think the first place that we should always be looking is the ability to, to reassign and reorganize ourselves to meet those needs. Uh, I would be concerned, um, about trying to just seek additional resources, additional funds. Um, I, I would not be prepared to support and add on, onto the budget. At, certainly at this stage in the game, um, I don't think that is, is a prudent way to go. We were asking the town for a four point nine nine percent increase. But, uh, we take that plus the resources that we're getting through grants. Our total spending package next year is going to be well over five percent of an increase.
Five point six five.
Five point six five percent there is, so, um, I, I think that it is always prudent, most prudent to to, to reorganize, um, you know, staffing, to make reassignments if necessary. And to try to solve the problems within the limited resources that we have. It becomes the balancing act. And, and I think that, um, the administration's telling us that you're able to make that balance. And I think you've probably heard loud and clear from the, the committee, the type of concerns that we share with the community. Um, and that we see as, uh, as needs. I have a high school student that we absolutely see as, as academic, uh, you know, uh, uh, supports. So, while there's certainly a, a, a level of confidence, and my, my confidence is, is quite high. Uh, I would much rather see, um, in a, 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 a direction of reassigning, um, you know, existing resources. And if we feel that that's enough of a priority, then I think we should be talking about where in the budget we want to take from to add to that. I, I would not support an increase to the four point nine nine percent that we're already prepared to ask for. And the town is, is, at least seems, prepared and open to a, a good conversation about. If we were to all of a sudden, uh, at the last minute, meaning tonight, uh, change that, I, I think that would not bode well for our own credibility. When you have, uh, we could certainly, uh, direct you or ask that you, uh, you do some more reorganization to create better scheduling or different scheduling, not necessarily better. And I think that you've done that. I think that to Suzie's point, I think you've come back and provided us uh, with at least an assessment from, from your perspective and one that's shared by the high school principal and staff. And, yeah, to keep us, uh, you know, keep us in the, up to speed on a monthly basis on how that, all that, how that shakes itself out. Because we're obviously very concerned about making those needs, um, uh, you know, more concrete. And be able to meet them in a, now it's going to be, you know, another year, uh, another really post-COVID year. Which, um, is going to be even more, you know, vibrant than next year, uh, excuse me, than, than this year. So, um, anyways, I, if, if we, if we want to talk about it, my two cents is we want to talk about reassigning money to the high school budget. I think we have to have the conversation about where are we going to take it from in order to put it in the high school budget. As opposed to adding on to our forty-seven million dollar request.
I wasn't advocating that, I don't know. I was trying to figure out, I've always won, when they do the budget, it's always like four point nine nine like. Did you stop there, even though there might be more needs because you didn't want to go over the five? That was more my question. I'm, I'm no way.
Oh, and maybe it's entirely valid question. I mean, if we were to look at, um, we have the books in front of us, uh, but without getting, you know, lots of paper shuffling, I'm sure if we were to attempt to, to fund the initial request of departments after a pretty thoughtful review, we'd be in the double digits.
Yeah, for sure.
So there is an expectation that, that obviously we're, we're, we have to also balance, right? The, the needs of what the town can, can support and the expectation that they, uh, uh, put upon us. So, um. Yeah, I mean, I think that's, uh, you know, that's, that's, we have, I don't think we've ever met all of the needs in, in any one year. But we, you know, we be, we'll be thoughtful about them and we, you know, I, I am, and methodically build into the, into the budget base, the types of things that we need to be sustainable year over year.
And we think about what we should fund this year and moving towards next year and the year after.
Well, and that's another great point, Christine, because one of the things, and we talk about this in the finance subcommittee all the time. Is that we are still reliant, uh, understandably so, but nonetheless, we are still reliant on, on, on recurring costs from federal money. Uh, and it was money that was absolutely appreciated and needed during COVID. Uh, and it was money that was absolutely appreciated and needed during COVID to get us through some times which we're not out of yet. But we do know there's going to be a cliff. And we are, we we are employing people right now off money that's going to end between 24 and 36 months from now. So the ability to, you know, our ability to add more positions into this budget only means those decisions are going to be that much harder on who we let go or how or how much more we grow the personnel budget.
Okay. Any more questions? I mean, comments or questions, discussion? Okay, so we're ready for a vote. All in favor? All right, so that passes unanimously six to zero.
Thank you.
Dr. Lyons.
Thank you for that.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the support. It's it's really appreciated, more than you know. Thank you. Um, that is it from for my items this evening. Thank you so much.
So for finance and facilities, our last meeting spoke about the capital approvals that we already heard about and this discussion that just happened. So that was pretty much the gist of the conversation, and I can't imagine that we have a high school working group update considering we just spent an hour talking about it.
No, we do not.
Okay. Um, Tom, do you have a labor and personnel? Oh, yes, we do.
We do. Um, we we are continuing to negotiate with Unit C. Uh, we met last Wednesday evening and we will meet again uh, next Wednesday. Our next meeting is March uh, the 30th. Those and those conversations are 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 progressing nicely. Um, certainly are more to follow. An update with regard to a Unit B, uh, Unit B of the Wakefield Education Association. Uh, Unit B are members of the group that are assistant principals and 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 directors. Uh, though there are nine uh, positions that are associated with uh, with so-called uh, Unit B. Uh, those individuals have sought to uh, have some independence and be able to uh, to to create their their a new unit, a new organization or um, new union bargaining group on behalf of the nine individuals. Uh, they have, they have appropriately petitioned the State Department of uh, of Labor. Uh, when that approval has been granted by the state, they've gone through that that process. We have been a, uh, it hasn't been a party, we've, we're not really a party to that until now. Uh, they have the the right under um, Chapter 150E of of state law to uh, be able to bargain into form a union that meets their particular needs and desires. And those nine individuals that are currently so-called Unit B have um, petitioned the state for approval for a new organization. Uh, they seek to call themselves the Wakefield Administrators Association. Uh, and they seek our recognition tonight, having now been approved by the by uh, by the state. So that's, that is a summary. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that is um, uh, that is before us, having been recommended by the Labor Relations Subcommittee. I move the school committee recognize the establishment and designation of the Wakefield Administrators Association as the exclusive bargaining representative for the purpose of collective bargaining over wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for the positions now formally affiliated with WEA Unit B within the meaning of Mass General Law, Chapter 150E.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? That passes unanimously six to zero.
So what that means now is that a Unit B, which is now the Wakefield, uh, we'll all gonna have to get used to a new vernacular for a little while, so it may take us a bit. But Wakefield Administrators Association, uh, their contract is also up this year, uh, June of '22. Um, so we will now be able to bargain or begin to negotiate contractual terms of employment with the now new Wakefield Administrators Association. So that will be coming forward in the coming meetings.
Good. Um, Amy Wall, I think you're gonna give an update for Student Services tonight?
Yes, so we met on the 16th and we had um, Dr. Lyons and Rosie with us. Um, we talked about the transition from the eighth grade going into the ninth grade with the special education and kind of what the needs are gonna be. Rosie touched base on that. Um, we learned a little bit about the class sizes um, at the high school as well as the ratio of um, special ed students and gen ed students. So that's something that um, is currently being worked on. Um, so we've got a little bit more insight on that. Um, let me see, we had, oh, we went over budget requests, uh, the the one FTE. Sorry, my glasses on. Oh, special education teachers at um, that's from Rosie, making sure we're equitable and um, look at data for special ed teachers. We talked about half, did you call it halftime FT or point five FT at um, for MSN at Greenwood? Um, and the point three at Walton and a point three increase in counseling. Um, what else? We talked about the pilot program um, that we might be talking about with having preschool at the Doll Bear. So taking a classroom.
At Woodville.
I mean, oh, at Woodville.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought Doll Bear, okay, my bad, sorry. Um, starting a pilot program with having a classroom at for preschool at the Woodville um, next year or the following?
Do you want me to add to it?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, right now, we have um, this unique problem where we have a waitlist for our pre-K students. And what we were discussing is the possibility, uh, we're not there yet, but we're discussing the possibility of trying to do a one-year pilot and and having, um, adding one additional preschool class. Um, if if we can find space or make it work at at Woodville. Um, and so we would assess it as we go through it. Um, it would be, you know, supervised um, by Matt Carter and Shannon Blacker. Shannon has a, has a kind of a, is a key player in this, right? She's still responsible for our early childhood education. Um, and so um, that's what we had discussed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and then we also um, discussed the 12th grade English class. Um, the changes to that, adding the electives and the changes being made from taking away CP and adding it to an honors course. Um, I talked with Doug about that afterwards and um, so adding the electives is a is a positive thing. It's giving students in the 12th grade more of an option to go and take electives that they might want to specialize in instead of taking the English course. However, the college prep and the honors seem to have been combined. So um, to can, to help with any confusion, I think it's Margaret is going to be sending out communication to junior parents.
Correct.
Um, to explain that whole thing so that there's not confusion about, because it, if you look at the the two courses, 11th grade and 12th grade, it almost seems like they're the same class. Um, so it's, they're gonna explain this a little bit more and give the kids the options of taking um, electives for that. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
So this information has already been given to students and and parents. Um, they're just going, so the letter that we're gonna send out toward the end of the week here, likely Thursday, um, will just just really be an additional opportunity just to do some outreach and to let anyone know. If you have any questions, please be in touch um, with your guidance counselor or the administration or special education, whoever you need to be in touch with to talk about this. And so we can go from there, but that's where that, that's coming at the end of the week.
Okay. I think I got everything. Oh, and our next meeting is on the 30th at 4:30 on Zoom. Everyone's invited.
Thank you.
Everyone's invited.
Um, okay, Kevin.
Great, thank you. Um, Policy and Communications Subcommittee met uh, last week on Tuesday, the 15th. And as we have all year, we had a slew of policies we continue to work on. Uh, my first go around, this was a cushy assignment to have. We met once a semester, but now we meet every other week, so it's uh, and we're not nearly done, so. Um, I'm gonna take them out of order of what we talked about, the order that we talked about them. But um, sexual harassment and Title IX, um, we continue to discuss. Um, a draft had been sent to MASC. It's under review, but they've also, Dorothy's encouraging us to look at some of their model policies, particularly the ones that like the other policies we did, um, worked on with tandem, in tandem with the Attorney General's Office. So we'll be doing that and we'll review those drafts and discuss at an upcoming meeting. Um, Dr. Lyons, Mr. Ingles, um, Mr. Weiner had been working on a digital use policy. Um, so we do have a good draft that uh, the Subcommittee has been tasked with reviewing and we're gonna talk about at the next meeting, uh, which is next Tuesday as well. Um, also on the document we didn't get to, but eventually um, want to kind of keep it on our agenda is gonna be a a the bullying prevention policy to kind of revisit that and to look at that critically. Um, the policy that we are able to present today, um, that Dr. Lyons worked on, um, was one that we had talked about, particularly when we had met with the WEA. They had talked a little bit about the conflict resolution policy. And if you took a look at it, it's 703E. Um, it's very brief. It's kind of just references basically that the administration will have a a process um, for any sorts of conflict resolutions. Um, so Dr. Lyons worked on a draft, um, using some other policies from other districts um, as well and kind of put those together. And so we're gonna be presenting for you today to place on the table a conflict resolution policy, um, which I think is nice because it kind of pulls in some of those process questions. Um, Ms. Lehman noticed that there were no references to conflicts with families and parents, so we're able to kind of put that in there too. Um, and then also in in that regard, I really encourage families and parents to start with the teacher and those sorts of things. So I really like the draft where it is. I will see where it goes in two weeks. Um, but we would like to, as a Subcommittee, place it on the table today. So if we can, I'd like to make a motion that the School Committee place conflict resolution policy 703 on the table for two weeks.
Motion made in seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? That passes unanimously six to zero.
It wasn't in the packet, but Doug emailed.
Correct, yeah.
But everyone should have it in their email.
Okay, and so Judy will add it to the packet before she posts.
Okay, great.
Um, one other um, communications part of the the Subcommittee as well. So Dr. Lyons reported, if you remember, we've engaged Gilfoyle PR um, to assist us with some communications. So he had worked with Jordan Maybloom um, on a couple pieces that'll be forthcoming. They visited some kindergarten classrooms, um, and some of the first pieces is gonna be advertised in the upcoming kindergarten events. Um, and then maybe some other opportunities uh, to engage in some digital content, some other things. I don't know if there was anything else you wanted to add?
Um, the, so the public relations firm Gilfoyle produced a, an article that was supposed to be featured in the item. We were hoping yesterday, but we gotta check in tomorrow morning and make sure that the item has it and we can get it, get it posted. What it did is it featured um, just some feedback from some of our kindergarten teachers and the work that they're doing. Um, but it also is is kind of a, a kind of an opportunity for parents to read a little bit about kindergarten in preparation for um, our kindergarten parent night, so, which is coming up, so.
Excellent. So we're excited about that and then, you know, some forthcoming pieces and features and those sorts of things. And then lastly, our next meeting is next Tuesday, so March 29th at four o'clock on Zoom.
Everyone's invited.
Everyone's invited.
All right. Um, future dates and agenda items, so we will have two meetings in April. Tuesday, the 5th, Tuesday, the 12th. We're off school vacation week. We are off election night. And when we approved the calendar ages ago now, um, we had said, instead of typically on election week, we move our meeting from Tuesday to Thursday, but that is just, it's an exhausting week for anybody who's running in the campaign. It's difficult for kind of new members, and so we all agreed to push that first, that next meeting to the first week of May. We also made a decision at that time to have three meetings, the 3rd, the 17th, and the 31st. Um, I think we might want to revisit that, um, based on feedback, um, Amy, that you've continued to give of kind of the the expectation from the community that our meetings happen on the 2nd and the 4th, um, Tuesday. So I'm gonna propose, I don't know if this needs to be a motion, but I'm gonna propose that we um, plan for meetings on the 3rd, the 10th, and the 24th. I won't be here for any of those, but I I I think it's important that we actually get this figured out because we have um, a green communities presentation that needs to happen in May and they need, they need to, I think, lay something on the table for consideration and then vote two weeks later. And so I need to get them the dates. That's the only reason I'm really pushing this. Um, and so I, if everyone is comfortable, I think we should revert back to having the meeting on the 3rd, the meeting on the 10th, the meeting on the 24th. Or if you guys just want to do two meetings in May, you could just do the 3rd and the 24th.
Why do we need the 3rd?
Um, I think just to get the new members kind of in and and going.
It's a gift for the new chair.
Well, then could we do 3, 10, and 24 to get back aligned?
That's, yeah, that was my original proposal, was 3rd, the 3rd, the 10th, the 24th.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
What we had approved before was the 3rd, the 17th, and the 31st. And I think what's become clear is like that just kind of messes with everybody.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Okay, so, oh, go ahead.
I I I'm unconvinced that we need three meetings in May. Um, and and I couldn't agree more with Amy. I think we need to get back to the public's expectation of the 2nd and the 4th. Obviously, if there's an emergency or or, you know, when we're chugging along with budgets and real, real busy, you know, planning time, which I don't think, you know, May is, May is town meeting time, there's a lot of, I think we should go back to our, uh, our, back to the the schedule of the 2nd and the 4th.
And not have new members?
And not, well.
I mean, it's only another week.
It's a week, it's a week away. It's not like.
So we'll have three weeks off?
Actually, I think you'll have four weeks off, won't you?
No, wait, the 5th and the 12th, it would just be three.
Right, so you go from the, you'd have a month off, I guess, from the 12th to the 10th.
Yeah, he's saying not till the first meeting wouldn't be till the 10th.
That, that seems like a long time.
Three weeks off. Might not, one, two, three. Um, would the Subcommittee still meet or are those gonna change?
If there's, if there's stuff to talk about it, the Subcommittee will.
Sure. Subcommittees don't, don't change until um, they're changed, you know, until the new chair uh, you know, decides to reorganize Subcommittee's, which often Subcommittee's aren't changed until after the end of the school year to continue, you know, so some continuation of a business that it doesn't just abruptly end and magically reorganize in in May. But yeah, if it, if the group thinks that that uh, between April 12 and May 10, that's too long a period of time, then that's a valid point. Then have.
I mean, I'm all for three meetings in May, as long as they're like.
Well, if there's a need for them.
I don't know what, but it's on the.
So we know at the very least that there's gonna be these green communities.
Yeah.
We know that, I think, the ELL team is gonna come in April.
It might be in May.
Oh, they might move to May, okay.
Right, we have, we have Glavia Smith coming.
Oh, Glavia.
That's on the agenda, right? We had moved Glavia twice already, so she's coming.
I mean, could we just do the the 3rd and have it be like, welcome new members, vote in a new chair, and do one presentation? And then, keep it short, then, and then do the longer ones.
Like I said, not gonna be here. You guys tell me, you guys tell me it's all done.
You can't leave.
So I think, I think that makes sense. I mean, I think the 3rd gives you if, in case something comes up, right? Then you've got a meeting scheduled.
Yeah.
Um, and if it ends up being a really short meeting, it ends up being a short meeting. And you, and like you said, you get to welcome new members, get their feet wet. All right, so we're going with the 3rd, the 10th, and the 24th. I'm gonna let the green communities folks know so that they can get that on their calendars and let you know.
Are you making the agenda for the 3rd then?
No.
Okay.
But Doug will know.
I got it.
What was that?
I was gonna say probably would, but I guess, yeah.
I mean, I guess I could.
I didn't hear.
We'll figure it out.
I was saying she probably could make it.
Right, until.
Before the 26th.
Right.
And talking consult.
Is it Dr. Lyons now?
Vice Chair.
Dr. Lyons can handle it.
He has magical powers.
Got it, thank you.
Um, any additional um, agenda items for the 5th?
Oh.
Okay. School committee comments. Kevin?
Um, just three quick things. Uh, this morning, uh, several of us got to visit Doll Bear, so, which was a, another great experience. And just want to thank uh, the community there for welcoming us and bringing. and just want to thank the community there for welcoming us and bringing us around. And it really, again, kind of connects what we talk about here with what's actually going on. So I appreciated all those students who who responded when I asked them questions and all the faculty who let us kind of listen in. So it was great to, great to see, so. Commonwealth designated tomorrow the Second Annual Crossing Guard Appreciation Day, so just wanted to take a moment to thank all those that work as crossing guards anywhere in the state, but particularly here in Wakefield. It's one of those jobs that, you know, they literally are putting their life on the line for people at times when you look at how people drive around town sometimes. So I appreciate them and know that we do as a committee as well. And then lastly, I know here in the high school, the drama club and the production of Good People moved on and will be in in the 2022 Drama Fest and are going to the final round, which is really, really exciting. So congratulations to everyone involved with that production and I'm hoping maybe there's a way I can squeeze in and see a performance of it. So I'm looking forward to that. So congratulations to them.
Awesome, Amy.
Well, Kevin took two of my items. No, and just congratulations to Allison Hammer, right? Is it Miss or Mrs.? I don't even know, but.
Miss.
Miss, okay, Miss Hammer. She's accepted a new position in Westford, so we will miss her terribly, but congratulations.
Amy?
I was going to say the same thing as Kevin too. The Dahl Bear visit was awesome today. The kids were so engaged and so respectful and answered questions and, you know, there was a couple of kids that were really into us being there, which was really cute to see and just seeing them walking quietly down the halls and you go into a classroom and nobody's, you know, yelling or doing anything. They were all very, very well behaved young kids, so it was really enjoyable to see them today.
Stephen?
See, congratulations, Doug, again.
Thank you.
I'm sure you're getting a lot of that, but well deserved, a long road, so good job. Thank you to you and Christine and Tim for all the work that you put into the budget, Kara. It seems very thoughtful and I I know the amount of work that went into it, so really appreciate your approach to it and how you, it's so holistic, how you have to approach it. And and that's kind of it also, the if you did want to observe Crossing Guard Day tomorrow, it's not Mass DOT. You can actually put a vote in for like your school crossing guard to get for them to get like a little award and then there's also like some signs you can print up, you know, cheering on your cross guard. I know we have some wonderful ones. So, yeah, that's it.
Tom?
Thank, I certainly echo what what everyone has said, including congratulations to Dr. Lyons. I really want to thank the, not only the school community, but the community at large in helping us to develop a budget and go through a very thoughtful, methodical process that that is, that, you know, is critically important to sustain and grow the work that we need to do for students and teachers. We, of course, now respectfully request the support of the Finance Committee in moving on to to town meeting in May, so we look forward to more, more to come. The budget process is not over, it just passes from us now to to the taxpayer. So we certainly look forward to being able to to advocate for those needs. On my, just my add to the congratulations on to the drama club, to, excuse me, not the drama club, but but the theater group for Good People, I think there's going to be a public performance here at the Galvin.
Oh, good.
That's on Thursday of this week, I believe. So as they prepare to go on to two states, there is going to be a local presentation, so. And that wants to see the the performance Thursday night at the Galvin, we can, we can, we can do so. So, thank you.
So Stephen, I was counting on you to talk about the Science Olympiad.
Oh, son of a god.
And I don't have it open on my screen, so I'm hoping you and Kara can maybe help. So a number of students at the Galvin participated in a state competition, I believe, right?
It is.
Yes, yes. And and it just sounds like it's a tremendous undertaking for the the teachers and then such an accomplishment for all the different kids that participated and all the different, just reading all of the different competitions or tracks that they were involved in was was really interesting and, but it sounds, it sounds like Chris Gorski and Becky, do you say her last name, Foy?
Foy.
Foy. And then I didn't, I don't remember the third.
Mr. West.
Oh, yes. What was his first name?
Jeff.
Jeff West are the three teachers that kind of sponsor that and and it sounds like there's high school students that kind of help out. So it just sounds like it was a really great kind of effort by a lot of kids across a lot of science disciplines. It was really, really cool to read. So we, for the public, we got an email that kind of outlined all of the accomplishments from that team, and so I just wanted to mention that. And I am really looking forward to our tour of the high school on Thursday, which I suspect will not be like the Dahl Bear in having kids welcoming us into the room. And my kids have actually said that if I walk into their classroom that I better not say anything or act like I know them.
Sounds like a challenge.
Well, that's, it was, can't you request that you not come into our classroom? I was like, I don't think it works that way. I might just show up there. So anyway, it'll be, it's, I'm looking forward to to walking around the high school because I didn't go to school here, I haven't spent that much time, and I have two children in the high school, so it'll be, it'll be great to take that tour on Thursday.
I get the same restriction, by the way.
I'm sure.
So we should march right in.
So I think with that, we can make a motion to adjourn.
Certainly. A move that school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. And that passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody.